If you're working, and y'all will stand and rise up. Are these speakers on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Neal's gonna lead us in the invitation, and Commissioner Browning will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'll pray with me, please. Our Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain. We thank you for living in the greatest place on earth. And we just pray that we would be about your business in a way that would honor and glorify you, God, us in these deliberations as we seek to do the very best for Glen County. And it's in your most precious name we pray.
Do you want me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make just one announcement today, just in general. I'd like to recognize my wife is, she's not here, but she's been married to me for 46 years a day.
God bless her.
And we can get her around the local option, sales tax, SPOLOST 2020 project list. When we left this off, we had asked the staff to come and give us some, come back to us and give us some numbers on this thing. And they've done that. And before we get into the numbers, looking at the projects, Aaron or Allen, y'all have anything y'all want to add to data?
Mr. Chairman, the commissioners, I'd like to thank Dave Austin, his team, as well as Hughes Development, others who have worked diligently, to the best extent possible, since your meeting last week, to come up with some cost estimates. We've tried to factor in inflationary costs in those as well, but you can see the bottom line is around $138 million. We've tried to include the city, JWSC, and Jekyll Island in those numbers as well, so hopefully it's a sort of a complete view of what's out there. We looked at the high priority projects and the median priority projects. And, you know, with the board, you know, once you narrow it down, you know, we'll have a little bit more time to go back and maybe focus on some projects that, you know, we have questions about from a staff perspective. I talked with Doug Kleppin with Herry last week, and they're, they're in the process of doing their analysis to determine cost assessments on the courthouse, based on the concept that the courthouse committee came up with. They will be on site later this week to just add boots on the ground, if you will, so they can have a better insight into what's taking place here in the field. They'll be able to talk with our facilities folks and ask some questions about mechanical systems and that sort of thing. And then the goal is for them to have a preliminary draft estimate, cost assessment by the end of the month, and then be prepared sometime in November to come here and make a presentation to the board. I'm not sure if Aaron has any comments or not, but I mean, county staff are here, and we're prepared to try to address any questions you have as we continue to narrow down this list.
Okay. Alan, thank you. So we're gonna have a number from Herry by the end of the month, and maybe the first, maybe early in, early in November, we could meet and talk about it, and what we want to do with the courthouse. Yeah, and I just reiterate, right now, right now, we really don't know what the courthouse might cause. We can pick a number out of thin air, which I did last meeting, but we don't know, and so I'd be, I'd be anxious to see what they come up with, and on their present day best estimate. Aaron, did you have anything else timeline-wise related that we need to keep in mind as we move forward?
I do, commissioners. Because there's a potential Level 1 county-wide project in the courthouse, that will dictate the length of time of a SPOLOST. So if that project will consume less than 24 months of revenues, estimated revenues, it's a five-year SPOLOST. If it's estimated to cost more than 24 months, then it's a six-year SPOLOST. And this is different than SPOLOST 2016 because we didn't have a Level 1 county-wide. That dictates a lot under state law. So this will be a five or six-year, depending if y'all go ahead and go forward with that Level 1 county-wide project.
So, put it another way, if we do a Level 1 project, if we do a Level 1 project, it's gonna have to run at least five years.
Unless you, excuse me, unless you have an IGA with the city, that gives you some some.
Well, IGA would probably make it run longer.
So absent that, and you have a Level 1, you're talking either five or six years, depending on the cost of that project.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. That's good to know. That's good to know. And when does our drop dead on having our list finalized? This, our project?
My recommendation is at the end of December. I have the resolution that includes the county's projects, the city's projects on that resolution. That's not an absolute drop dead date. I think that comes around mid-January, but I, you know, because of just making sure we have an initial, a few days for advertising publications to work with the Board of Elections, I think we could have something done by the end of December. That would be fantastic.
Yeah. It'd be a good Christmas gift, if it's done. Okay. Well, that's all good information we need to know, and I believe that puts us into this list, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, you're gonna, we're gonna run this list today predicated on a $25 million project for the courthouse? Is that, just using that as a hypothetical?
Number and try to pare down the rest of the list based around that number?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a number that kind of is more about giving us an idea how this thing might work. You know, $25 million, I don't, I just, I just picked $25 million. I just took the Space Needs Committee square foot that they came up with. I think it was, what, 40,000 square feet? And multiplied it, I think I might have multiplied it by $350 a square foot. So what's that tell you? I mean, that's picking numbers.
You know, I almost wondered this time of the, this process, we, I don't know if we've really discussed the length of time. I know we've kind of said it's five years, sounds interesting, but the more I kind of delve into this and listen to folks, I'm of the opinion that we should look at a three-year SPOLOST, and that in that three-year SPOLOST, set aside $4 million or so for design, a complete design of the building so that we could accurately go out and get it bid and present it to the public with a lot more certainty than what we currently have or may well have from Herry. And also include within that money, money to make some immediate security needs improvements to the existing courthouses, because, you know, we started out this whole process with the judges saying they were, this was a space issue, we don't, we're not in dire need right this second, but we're getting close. And I think the presentation that came from the courthouse committee was, yeah, you got, that's true, but you've really got more of a security issue, and this is really, should be driving it more than anything. And I think if you, if you keep it in a three-year SPOLOST, that allows us to get that accurate plans done. I think the public would probably appreciate it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go out and try to build a building based on a concept plan. And this is a very sophisticated building. I mean.
Based on what I just heard from Aaron, any money you commit to that courthouse project, that's still a Level 1 project called the Glen Gibson Tower County. And they're just gonna make it a five-year SPOLOST.
No, if it's not, if the revenues, if the costs exceeded two years' revenue, is that correct?
That's a six-year versus five. You know, there's one option, I'd want to look at it a little further, but one option is not to, I mean, having a Level 1 county-wide enables the county to take that off the top of the revenues before there's any split with the city. One option, again, I would want to look at it a little further, is to just have that taken out of the county's portion and not off the top.
But we couldn't take the $4 million off the top because it's a Tier 1?
That's correct. Once you, once you label that, or, you know, there's only four or five different kinds of projects that are qualified.
But that's the first phase of that project, is what we're saying. It's not a complete project, but it is the first phase. Now, why wouldn't it be Tier 1?
It would be a Level 1 county-wide.
So we could do the $4 million off the top?
You could, absolutely.
Off of the scenario I just gave you?
You could absolutely do a courthouse as a Level 1 project, but once you, once you identify it as a Level 1 county-wide project, take it off the top, it's either a five or six-year.
Can't be less than five.
Cannot be less than five or six years.
I read Commissioner Quinn's email, and I think you make a lot of good points in there. Look, like most things, we didn't create this problem, we inherited it. We inherited it from the 90s when the courthouse was built woefully too small for, and based on the report given last week, I spend a fair amount of time at courthouse, in the magistrate court, and I've got two observations. One is it's packed every time I go in there. People are sitting in the benches beyond the rail which separates the jury from the judge, because there's no place else to sit. The other observation is, well, there are no criminals in there, but ain't nobody happy. Everybody's mad, either mad at somebody else in there, or mad that the system is, quote, "failed." I think that moves up when you get to the state court, and you get more anguish in the state court, and it probably moves up when you get to the superior court, which I rarely have spent any time there. But you don't go to the courthouse for a birthday party, or anniversary, or celebration, it's because you got a problem, and people are mad. But I don't think there's any anguish like there is in the juvenile court. I have been there, and I have seen that.
Sure.
And if a judge takes children and removes them from their parents and puts them in foster care, there is anger like I've never seen before. And where the juvenile court is housed, and the drug court, you've got the Golden Isles Board of Realtors in the same building, you've got the Board of Elections in the same building, now we've got a poll, I mean, a voting place going on, going on up there in the same building. You've got the Veterans Administration in the same building that are dealing with folks like me and Mike Browning who've got PTSD. And you've also, you've also got the County Wellness Center, and they are all separated from this juvenile court by sheetrock. And, and.
I'm not disagreeing that there's a need, but I'm saying the way we're going, the way we're parsing it is, we're putting it on the, on the list for $25 million. If this thing doesn't pass, then where do we sit? We're in no better shape than now.
Well, in my, in my opinion, with the courthouse, we float a bond and all the taxpayers pay the bill. I think it's that critical, that we do something, and $4 million won't cure the juvenile court.
No, it won't cure it. This plan wouldn't cure the point, but it would give you a way to phase this thing in. If we do it, get the exact plans, get a hard bid, and then bring it back to the voters in three years.
Ideally, I cannot argue with your point there. I think it makes all the sense in the world. I just don't think we got the time to do that. I mean, we're not talking months, we're talking years.
Bill, how much, how much faster would it go if we get a $25 million allocation to this? If we get the SPOLOST to fat, how much faster would it go, going this way versus what David suggested?
Three years. I mean, I think you could address the juvenile court for $25 million, and I think you could address security offense, is what they were talking about. You can't do everything, but you could, you could, you could build out a first floor to address the juvenile court, which I think is the most critical issue, and I'm basing that on a guy that's worked for a bunch of presidents of the United States and the Secret Service. And I think you obviously have got to do something about security of the courthouse.
Sure.
I mean, somebody walks in, walks in the courthouse with a firearm, it's over. It's, it's done.
I don't disagree with the security issues. I'm just quite, and maybe you're right, maybe we need to float a bond on this, but.
The other, the other thing that strikes me is that, is that the judges, they, when I said it's not, not a problem right here and right now, but it will be in five years. You know, if you do the plan that you're suggesting, three-year plan to get an allocation to design the building, you know, and the building ends up costing 25 to 50 million dollars in present dollars, who knows what it's gonna cost them down the road dollars, why is there gonna be any better appetite for the Board of Commissioners or the public at that point to engage in a courthouse building? I mean, I keep hearing, you know, several of you say, no verticals, no verticals, no verticals, like there's something wrong with a vertical. I don't see how we get by in this community with not meeting the needs of the darn justice system. I just, it boggles my mind. We can keep moving it down the road like we have everything else, but it's not gonna get cheaper, and it's not gonna appeal more to people down the road.
Look, in my opinion, I think the situation with the juvenile court is so critical, you could put a metal building next to the courthouse, and it would be much better than what we've got down there in this office park building. And I think you could put a metal building down there for $25 million. But, and I'm being facetious there, but I think that juvenile court has got to be dealt with, or you're gonna have, you're gonna have something bad.
I'm not disagreeing on the safety or the issue or pushing it down, I'm just trying to figure, think through what's the most logical sequence of steps to take to get it done, whether it's a five-year or a three-year. I know if I was, this is my project in my own personal life, I wouldn't go and borrow that money on a concept plan. I'd want some detailed drawings.
Couldn't agree, I couldn't agree, I couldn't agree more. I just don't think we have the luxury.
Well, aren't we gonna have to, we're gonna have to get the space study need done, and then we're gonna have to design it before we can put it out in a bid, before we can even consider building it, right?
Right.
I mean, it's got to go through that sequence of events.
Yeah, I think Johnny Dootson said six months and 18 months.
Yeah, an 18-month window to get that much of it done. I agree that we've got to get started on it. It's, it's how do we do it, and at what point is it most palatable to the public so that we can get something passed? Because if they decide not to pass the SPOLOST, then we're, we're back floating a bond is our only option.
Well, I mean.
I mean, it's a question posed. I'm not saying, you know, one answer's better than the other, but we, I think we certainly need to look and pose the question, you know, which, which is the best avenue? I think we all agree that we gotta move forward and do it now, but what's, what's the best avenue to do it is?
Well, and again, excuse me, Mike, I go back to the point, whether it's with SPOLOST, with tourists paying for whatever it is, half the money, or bonding it where we pay for all of it, it's gotta be done. And if it's 25 million that goes into a SPOLOST, then that's 25 million. If it's another 10 that we have to bond, then we gotta bond it. We, I don't think we got a choice.
But if it's, if it's a Tier 1 project, and we put $25 million down, and it goes over by $5 or $10 million, who pays for that extra money? Is it county?
County.
City doesn't participate, you know it's a Tier 1?
Yeah. Let me, let me throw this in about how it kind of works, whether, you know, the problem of the number that you use, I don't see how that problem ever goes away, however we do this. And, and, you know, we could put money in this SPOLOST, you know, to do the design on it, and then, you know, develop a bid package, and we can get an architect's number on SPOLOST 2020. We can get a, have a number to have an idea of what it's gonna cost, but you're not gonna have, you're not gonna know what it's gonna cost until you put it out for bid. And you're gonna have to make a decision if you believe you gotta have, you know, do, do this work or some work similar to it. At some point in time, you're gonna have, if you don't go with a bond, if you go with the SPOLOST, you're gonna have to make a decision before you actually have that SPOLOST in place and have that funding in place. You're gonna have to make a decision in the fore, we're doing the work at the courthouse, with a number that you still don't know until you get the money approved, because we can't go out and bid things and get prices until we had the money in the bank account.
But, Mike, every project's like that.
Yeah, 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 that's what, yeah.
Everything we do is like that. That's what happened to the animal shelter.
I agree. That's what I'm saying. Every project's that way. We just want to know.
What I'd very much like to avoid happening in the future.
But every one of the projects we do, I don't know how you avoid it. You can't.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You phase it in, you go and you get, you get a plan, architectural drawing, you get a rental company, give you some kind of bid. I'm sure Herry could give us a much better bid, idea of numbers, and then we put it on a SPOLOST in 2022. If it fails, then you bond it.
Well, again, you know, you're gonna take Herry's number, which I think would probably be a pretty good number for right now when you get it, but it would be no different if you fast forward to 2022, or whenever you do another, you're gonna have to get an up-to-date best assessment. It won't be a quote. You're gonna have to say, okay, here, you gave us a price back in 2019, what is it today? But, but you're still gonna be probably, you could be two to three years away from ever building that thing, because by the time, by the time you have these discussions like we're having now, and you take it to the voters, and they pass it, depending on when the money's collected, unless you go out and float a bond to, and, and, you know, you could do a bond at that time, pay it back with SPOLOST, of course, that's what costs you the extra money, but, but still, you're not gonna know until you bid that thing. I mean, you're still gonna be, you know, you could be, you could be a couple of years away from the discussion that we're having now to really knowing what that thing's gonna cost you when it goes out for bid. I mean, that's not gonna change. I mean, that part, trying, trying to find that magic process that's never been used before, to come up with what these things are actually gonna cost, I don't know how you do it. I mean, I mean, I hear what you're saying.
Well, I mean, I think you get a lot closer than you do when, just on a concept alone, even if you use Herry now, I mean, which is a lot better than we did in previous verticals.
Yeah, you could, you could, I'm not gonna argue about that. You know, we could go in and get it.
Well, it sounds like we have a little bit of time, maybe you guys might wanna think about it, and discuss it some more, but.
Mr. Chairman, you, you said that you were pulling like a $350 square foot construction price on 40,000 feet, that'd be 14 million, not, not 25 million. That's how that math works. But, but what I'm saying, and that was just, could it be a different value on the thing, or do we put that much money in there? But if it's as critical as we say it is, and I'm certainly not telling you that it's not critical, but if it's that critical, do we try to find money and allocate now to get the design study started now, get the design working, so that when the SPOLOST passes, then, then we're ready to go? I mean, this, this is years that we're talking about. We're talking about 2021 before we even get started, right? And so, you know, if it's as critical as, as, as we're stating the need to be, then we don't need to wait two more years to, to, to start the design study and, and, and get, get the space study needs done, and then engage an architect to start, start the drawings, and then, when the money starts coming in, we'll be a closer window to actually having a current bid to work with.
If, if, if the final price is somewhere between 25 and 50 million dollars, I've heard the number kicked around, that roughly 10% go into the design and the architectural plan. Where are we gonna find $2.5 to $5 million?
I don't know. We find money for other things. I'm just saying, if that is the need.
I found $2.5 million for anything.
If, if that is the need, then, then let's start looking at addressing the need, because, you know, if you're talking, talking 25 million on 40,000 square feet, that's over $600 a foot for construction. I don't think that's a number that we ought to be looking at for affordability in Glen County. If we're, if we get to $50 million on, we're over $1,000 a foot. So I don't think those are real numbers.
If we borrowed the $2.5 to $5 million to design it, and the SPOLOST passed, can we pay, get paid back for that?
If it's in your SPOLOST, yes, you can. If it's a SPOLOST project, can you either advance yourself that money, or you borrow it, you can, you can pay yourself back?
Forty, forty, you don't need 40,000 square feet to address the juvenile court.
And that's true.
You don't need $14 million to address the juvenile court.
Well, if you're doing both wings, it's 22,000 in 18, it's 40 total. Are you, are you, right?
Yeah, 40 total, and that's 14 million.
And then 80,000, that's gonna be reconfigured, correct?
Yep.
But that was also just the first, the first floor.
Well, I understand, and, and, you know, there's been some conversation that we don't need to address wings on it with a, with a structural integrity to add second, third floor. We'd be better off to build a detached building, because the price per square foot, building a one-story building capable of supporting three floors is much more per square foot to build than, than a building designed for a one level. And, and so, you know, but that's space study needs, that's, that's design feasibility, that's all that's studied. And so we find that out as we move forward. But if, if, if it's critical, then let's, let's start finding more immediate solutions. We can borrow that money if we need to and get repaid in SPOLOST. If it's inevitable that we're gonna move forward, then, then move forward. Yep, we're, I've been reminded more than once that we're here to solve the problem, so.
And I think it's good to have these discussions, so I don't, I don't have a problem with these discussions.
Yeah. I would like to hear back from Herry, from, from, from Mr. Kleppin, and get his assessment of what's been suggested by the Space Needs Committee, and any cost analysis that he can, he can furnish. You know, when I said I'd use $350 a square foot, I did. But also, what I didn't say was I threw in some money for the security stuff. See that? $350, I mean, that's all the fence in.
You gotta reconfigure. We're talking about another $11 million, so, so, I don't, you know, I'm not saying you're wrong, or you're right. I know you're pulling numbers to.
Well, I put in the government fudge factor and all that, because I know what we get into, it's nevertheless, it's always more. But that was just a, that was just a big ballpark, big ballpark.
That big ballpark's out there in the, in the public arena now.
Yeah, just a big ballpark. And I really did that more to give you an idea of, if you use that number, use any number you want to, but if you use that number, along with what the county is gonna have, along with what the Jekyll's gonna have.
And I understood why you were doing it.
All that was for, just to give you an idea of what you may have for this list.
Yeah.
That's, that's what it's.
I understand that.
And now, I would, I would recommend, this is here from Doug, and I think when he's done, we'll have a, we'll have a little bit better idea, you know, if we wanna go on ahead and entertain, you know, borrowing some money in the near future, finding some money in the near future, or if we wanna go on ahead and try to put something on SPOLOST 2020.
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of today, and doing what we're gonna do today in trying to get something accomplished, I would suggest that we use the $25 million figure just as a figure, just as a number. I would suggest that we use the twenty-five million dollar figure just as a figure, just as a number. And the hundred and thirty-eight million dollar total figure, and we go at it just on that premise. Hey, guys.
Quick, quick.
Matthew, guys, Mike and I probably got PTSD, but we're not getting compensated for it. So, I, I was being facetious.
Yeah. So, so, the, the hundred and thirty-eight million dollar figure, throw that back at me again.
That's the total on here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's the total. It's the dream list.
I got it, I got it. But what I was thinking, you wanted to use the twenty-five million because we also have a target, if it is a five-year SLOSS, of a hundred to a hundred and ten million dollars, correct?
Yeah.
So you subtract that twenty-five, and then you subtract JECO and JWSC and the, the city of Brunswick. What are we left with theoretic, in that theoretical?
Forty-one.
About forty.
Okay.
Forty, forty-five.
So, so out of this, a hundred and thirty-eight million or whatever it is, we gotta, we have a, basically a, a budget of forty to forty-five million.
No, 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 that's everything. That's.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But out of that hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, we can only select projects up to a cost of forty to forty-five million dollars in your scenario of a five-year SLOSS with a twenty-five million dollar courthouse, correct?
Well, the courthouse, the JWSC, it's all in that one thirty-eight.
So we, we, basically what we gotta do is figure out how to.
Thirty-eight are all these projects right here.
Yeah.
Okay. Forget that for a second. What I'm saying is, if we have a hundred to a hundred and ten million dollars, and we're taking twenty-five out of that, and whatever you agree that JWSC is, we're left with forty to forty-five million dollars for the county of Glen to select projects out of a hundred and thirty-eight million dollar list, correct?
It's not out of a hundred and thirty-eight million dollar list. The, the hundred and thirty-eight counts JWSC and all of those.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the summary on the back.
I, I didn't look at that.
I didn't think you had seen, I didn't think you had seen that.
I, I, I got it, I got it. So what is the list that, that, that we're selecting from that reference?
It's about forty-two million, seven seventy-five, once you back out the city of Brunswick, JWSC and JECO.
Back everything out. What do we, what do we have left that we're looking at? The, the wish list. How, how, how big is the wish list?
I think you didn't hear your number out.
Uh, you'd have to add thirty-eight million because I started with a hundred million. So you'd have to add thirty, thirty-eight million to, uh, forty-two million. So you're right at eighty million.
Eighty million of projects that are under consideration in a budget of forty million.
That are on this list, so.
Yeah. So roughly, you know, for some reason, half aren't gonna, half the dollars aren't gonna make the cut. I mean, I, one, one way to think about it is forty million dollars isn't gonna make the cut.
So, so what I did is I took seventy-five million. We're dealing with a hundred million dollar budget for discussion purposes. I took seventy-five million because we took twenty-five off the top. So that's what's left. I subtracted fourteen, four seventy-five for the city of Brunswick. That's nineteen point three percent. Subtracted fifteen million for, um, JWSC.
Got it.
Subtracted twenty-seven fifty for.
Got it.
JECO. That leaves forty-two million, seven seventy-five. I start with a hundred, so I have to add back thirty-eight million. This is getting way too complicated to, to that, to figure out what the list was started with.
There's a hundred and thirty-eight million dollar dream sheet right here, which includes fourteen, fifteen million for Brunswick, fifteen for JWSC, and two million seven, and that's included in the hundred and thirty-eight.
When you take out the courthouse, the city, JWSC, and JECO, it's eighty million.
Okay. So.
He's right.
Yeah.
I get it. I get it. But.
I thought that was the question.
It is, it is.
And he's assuming we're only collecting a hundred million.
Yeah.
Right?
Conservant.
Huh?
Conservant.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So ba- basically, we gotta cut thirty-eight million dollars off of these county projects that we've got.
Correct. About, about half, half the dollars of projects have to be cut.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. You gotta cut about forty million.
Yeah.
Right. That's the point.
Yeah, okay, I got it. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
So if you, if you wanna hit forty million.
So I can help you out on a couple. Talked with the county attorney. He looked more at the EDA projects, the site development, and the, uh, the grad certification at the airport. Aaron, I might mess it up, so I'll let you.
Right. So the, um, capital projects have to be county, um, or be through a, a state-owned, uh, you know, project, owned or operated. So as I understand it, some of these EDA projects are, are projects that are meant to, um, entice, incentivize business to come in there and make it a pad-ready site. So, um, if that is, if that's accurate, then then I, I would question whether that's an appropriate capital project for, for a county SLOSS.
Which one, which one?
Other.
Which one?
Very bad.
Both of them. So.
Both of them. And we can certainly, we can obviously work with Water and Sewer Commission. We work with the JECO Authority. We can work with other, you know, it's not a problem of working with a state agency or state authority. It's, it's the project that we're, we would be funding with SLOSS dollars.
So that may be both of those.
I thought other areas had done this with SLOSS dollars.
I, I, I couldn't tell you that they haven't, uh, but.
That's something I very much like to know for a fact.
From what I understand, up in Dublin, they, every quarter cent of, of the SLOSS penny goes to EDA, uh, projects.
Yeah. That, that's my understanding.
We can, we can, I, I'm, I'm not saying that SLOSS money can't go towards an EDA project. But if their, if their goal is to sell these plots off to a private party, then we, we are, we are essentially making capital projects, approving capital projects for a third-party for-profit entity, and.
Can you check in and see what they're doing up there?
I can. So it, it's not, ProVision's not working EDA and having them be a part of SLOSS. I think we can do that, as we have with other partner, uh, agencies. It's, it's what they're gonna do with that.
If they lease the land to businesses, that might be acceptable, but if they sold the land, you're saying it wouldn't be, is that?
It's a closer question. Um, the question still is, is that a, a, a capital project? Depending on what they're doing with the funds, is, you know, making it, and I would know, need more, know more about those nuances and those details.
I'd, I'd like for you to find that out for us. I'd like to be able to make informed decisions.
Seems like I recall Camden put a half a mil on down there, and, and it didn't work out. Took it off.
That, that's, that's about three million there that's in question.
Yep.
Close to three million.
What about this listing?
One and a half and two and a half.
Public safety complex. Why is that on, on, on the other rather than on the JWSC?
Two and a half. That was two.
I thought it's these two.
No, no, no.
Austin, that station, is that something critical right now?
Still down. Call it, ask somebody?
Yeah, yes, it is. It needs to be done.
Okay. All right. That's good enough. Well, um, if it's critical, we'll leave that, this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's the easier one to deal with.
Director Murphy, to answer your question, that list station serves our complex. And I think that's why it's on our portion, not JWSC.
How about the, the, one of the other big ticket items here, the, uh, College Park drainage for ten million dollars?
That's in the city. If it all come off the city.
I already cut half that out on my page.
Commissioners, this is Paul Andrews. That's a project that we've been working on in conjunction with the city of Brunswick. That, that drainage system drains both the city and the county. A year plus ago, we got an estimate on a four-phase project, uh, concept plan to move forward with to, to make, uh, substantial improvements to that drainage system. What I put on there is the, is the phases to bring improvements all the way up to, um, Altama Avenue, where it starts making real improvements in the county. The number came from, we're currently splitting costs with the city of Brunswick based on the, um, the flows, who's contributing how much to the drainage system. It's about a two-thirds ci- uh, county, one-third city. Based on those preliminary cost estimates, did that breakdown of, by the city and the county. That, that's something that we've negotiated on each of the intergovernmental agreements. We can, we can certainly look at that again as we get to construction. But that's based on the current split and then, uh, tacking on some, uh, inflationary funds.
Does the city, how does the city, are they putting it on their SLOSS, or how do they, how are they paying for their portion? Do you know?
I assume that they're putting it on their SLOSS. They, they, they have set up their SLOSS a little differently than, than the way we have in that they have, uh, their current SLOSS has, uh, broader categories, drainage improvements, road improvements. And so they have monies allocated to those. As I understand, talking with the city, um, that, that, that's high on their list. I'm assuming that they would be programming money in their side of the SLOSS to cover costs on their end. I haven't confirmed that.
You say these improvements to Altama Avenue, that's coming from the north?
That would be coming from the, the east. What the, the plan that we're working on now is to make improvements all the way down the spur.
Right.
Um, to, to the College Park subdivision. There's a big ditch back in the woods there.
I know, I'll bear with it.
Okay. And then, and then that.
Does this, does this address Cypress Run and the Moss Creek and those new apartment complexes? That's up toward Canal. I mean, that's the.
That's correct.
That's the other way.
That is.
Is that what this addresses?
That, that brings it to Altama, which is the big bottleneck for all that area from the county drain in that way. There, there's the next phase that would make improvements fully in the county on up, um, Old Cypress Mill, Old Cypress Mill Road, on up towards, um.
So are we starting at the marsh and coming to Altama?
Correct. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we're starting at the bottom and, and, and working up. That's been the, uh, the program. And, and that's why it's expensive. It's phase one, the first phase to get to them, to get the new drainage downfall put in is the most expensive.
Paul, uh, how much of the drainage issue is in the unincorporated area of the county?
Uh, we've had, um, a couple of the subdivisions, the, um, Cypress Run and, um, Suburban Estates, I believe is the name of it, have recurring flooding in there. Um, they flooded several times over the last ten years or so. Some of the units in there have gotten water in it. We've also gotten, um, water draining down, standing in the streets. It's a, it's a lot of, it's a lot of water coming that way.
But how much of the, the entire drainage, has, has an area been identified, a area including the city and county? Where drainage issues are? How much of that area is, is county?
Um, yeah, we, we have a, we have a, as I understand, there's about twenty units that have had recurring flooding, some of them were duplexes.
Area, if you could geographically, if you could.
How much of the area, it's, uh, it's hard to.
Two-thirds of the whole area.
The, the county has two-thirds of the drainage. Within the county's area, there's, um, areas in, in Cypress Run and areas in suburban estates that.
Eventually is gonna be spent. You know, how, how much of the area that's, that has a drainage issue is county? I'm not talking about the whole county. I'm talking about for this.
Ten million dollars right here.
How much is this?
They kept it out of that whole drainage basin, the drains down through there.
Look, right now, right now, if we don't change anything, we're gonna spend ten million dollars, okay? And how much of that is gonna be spent within the incorporated area of the county? How much of this ten million dollars?
Very little.
Not a penny. See where I'm going?
I, I understand. Now I see where you're going.
And, and if another penny ever gets spent, we have, we're gonna spend ten million dollars in the city limits. So help me out, help me out. Help me wrap my, find a way to wrap my arms around this ten million dollars in the city.
Well, what, because our drainage goes down through the city.
I understand.
And so without, without us making improvements on the city side first.
Yeah, at which, which I wanna know how much we really should be putting in as far as our part. I heard you say, I heard you say we're putting in, what'd you say, sixty percent or something? Two-thirds, two-thirds?
Based on the, based on the area that we drain out of that whole basin that drains down through there. The unincorporated county has sixty percent of that area. The city has, I mean, it's two-thirds and one-third. About.
All right. If we can get this done, it gives us closer to actually getting into doing work one day when we have money into the unincorporated. It gets us closer. When we get into that area that's unincorporated and it's another ten, fifteen, twenty million, I don't know, I'm just throwing numbers out again. Don't quote me.
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna get the city chair to do what we wanna do in the unincorporated area?
I would think that during the negotiations of that intergovernmental agreement, we would want that commitment from the city that they would assist. Since we assisted in the, in making improvements on the whole.
I would hate that they would look at it like a roadblock and say, oh, no, y'all went to county now.
Let, let me ask this question. Uh, at Glen Isle Center, the city has instituted a stormwater runoff fee.
Yes, sir.
And, and it has its own retention ponds. Uh, the stormwater runoff that exceeds the retention ponds goes through the county ditches. So what kind of credit are we getting for that?
We, we weren't, we don't.
It was water going from the city to the county.
Yes, sir. And, and currently, that's where that, that drainage system goes to. Is it, it falls back out into the, we drain, uh, chunks of the city down through the county system. We haven't, we don't receive anything out of their stormwater utility for that service.
Paul, let me ask you a question. It's, is this from the marsh where, where we saw the design drawings earlier on? Up to Altama or, or new bi-ducks, uh, box covers under, under, uh, community back into, towards College Park? Where, where does this amount of money, where does it, where's the stopping point?
Up to improvements under Altama.
Go in, go in.
As, as we're heading towards the west.
Oh, oh, way to Altama.
Yes, sir. And under, and under Altama, including those faces in it.
So we're, we're coming up to the target intersection, that.
Yes.
That route.
Yes, sir. Right over there by Sonic is where, where it crosses in the, uh, in the rental center.
How, and so it's ten million of county money and five million of city money to, to do that project is, is, is what the projected cost is?
Yes, sir.
So how, how many feet of drainage is that improving? Ballpark for today.
That's all the way down to this.
Is it a mile? Is it a mile and a quarter?
It, it's probably three-quarters of a mile.
Three-quarters of a mile.
It's all the way down to where we drop out in the marsh after, as you come down the spur, you go by the, uh, the new tractor place. The, um.
And then it'll drop into the marsh on, on the west side of Highway seventeen going into the marsh there, correct?
On the south side of Spur twenty-five.
Yes.
Right. There's a lake there. That's all the, uh, Fourth Street landfill property. And once we get past that, there's the pocket marsh there, and we're looking at dropping it in there.
That's how I understood. So we're looking at three-quarters of a mile improvement for fifteen million dollars.
I wanna say that was.
Maybe, maybe that's, that's.
Maybe a little more to get y'all to head to Altama. That's a big improvement running down that way.
So the city, if they were identifying that amount of money for this project, it should be around five million. I mean, if we're, I mean, if we're putting in two-thirds and they're putting in a third.
Yes, sir.
If ours is ten, then.
Based on those, on those estimates, the current estimates that we have. Now, as we're, we got, uh, EMC Engineering is working on the design and all, so we haven't gotten into cost estimating on what they can get permitted. I expect that, I'm hoping that was a, uh, a budgetary estimate and a large number, and it'll come down as we get into the details.
So Paul, let me ask you, if the, if the city, using the estimates we've kicked around, the city's revenue stream is fifteen million dollars. And assuming they're willing to use a third of it for this project, you, you think the project could move forward? What if they decide not to do that? And we've allocated ten million dollars out of our money and they haven't done the five million dollars? Are, are we able to accomplish anything with that ten million dollars, or is, is the project stuck in the bud?
Um, I would expect we could accomplish something. Would it, would it get it all the way up to Altama? Probably not. And that's the, that's where it starts making, uh, the, the larger improvements to the county system. But would we be able to get in there and, and get work done and get that new outfall? Yes, sir.
This is a project that really, if we, if we choose to, uh, and, and embrace it, would really require close cooperation and agreement between the city and the county on accomplishing what, what you hope to accomplish.
I, I would think that would be, we would wanna have that sorted out before we got it to the final, you know, as, as this is the final list, to make sure the city's on board that they're gonna allocate those funds to.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you, Paul.
Do we know the, the, the total, I was trying to do it here quickly, on all the high priority projects that are on the list, on the list only? Does anyone total that up at any time?
We can add them up real quickly.
Can you pull me some of this spreadsheet?
It's, I can figure it out, I mean, it's not necessary.
We can, we can work the spreadsheet over here.
You can just send it to me at some point, that'd-
And that'd be right there.
I think that might help all of us, Commissioner, if we get that number.
My best guess would be about fifty-five million. Just looking at them real quickly.
Well, don't, don't add in the courthouse.
I didn't, uh, it's the one big thing that I included in the, College Park and that fire station, you're still with the two fire stations, they're almost, you know, fourteen million dollars right there. The College Park with the two fire stations, just twenty-five million dollars.
Two fire stations, you're worth it, man.
Take those out here, right around forty.
Got them all over?
That's if we're on agreement about what's high priority and what's not.
Yeah.
I have any questions, I'm looking.
We got it on here, we have a question, we've got it on here, we'll delete them off and, uh-
Okay.
Yeah, it's all ready.
Come back to that. I'm sure it's going to be dead, but I'm just, just looking, I said, gosh, we're trying to cut so much, I mean, I'm a little bit of a-
Why are we going to meet you for this kind of thing? I don't think you're going to have to look at it. House and eight, four thirty right out. And the Mars building, a hundred dollars in there. Three and three, three and three, close to a million one.
It's about fifty-nine million.
Best in sixteen.
Sixty-two.
We got to knock out the EDA though, right? Did we decide to knock out the EDA and the, uh-
Yeah, we got to. Two, two five and two and a quarter.
And-
Set everything except the water station.
And the two and a quarter, the grand, you know, we're at fifty-six point nine million. That's with the courthouse.
Down, down the courthouse.
That's without the courthouse, oh. Is that with the fire stations too, Matthew, or?
That is with fire stations.
Back to, back to fire stations, that's really about forty to forty-two million dollars.
Fifty-six, seven, eleven.
Forty-nine.
But you said it was, uh-
No, hold on.
Four, the fire stations, both are fourteen million dollars.
Sorry, I'm forty-two, four, sorry.
Yeah, about forty-two, forty, forty-two million dollars.
What about the Scranton Connector and Spur Insection improvements? It's, I mean, I know that's important, but how about that? Spent a lot of money at the one right up the road there.
That, that wasn't an H.
That's a B.
That's a B.
But it, it's in the dollar bill.
It's in the dollar bill.
In the what?
In the dollar bill.
Well, we all had left high priority projects in the, in the speaker's-
I got it, I got it, I got it.
David asked us to add up the Hs.
I got you, I got you.
So if you added up the Hs, without the fire stations, about forty-two million dollars.
That is me.
I was talking when, when that was said, so I didn't hear that.
I was, and I was talking to you.
But that was a question, it was a good question. All we have to do is decide what, what is H and what's, what is M in our own worldview.
Well, well, looks like to me, if you add, of course, attract the folks. If you add up all the Hs, you have seventy-four million, four thirty-six. That does, except for the College Park drainage, I didn't put that ten in. If you add up all the Hs, you have seventy-four million, four thirty-six. That includes the courthouse, take out the courthouse, it's forty-nine million four. If you take out the firehouses, that's, that's, uh, thirty-five million. Is that right?
Forty, about forty-two, four forty.
But you took out, you took out College Park out of this big, that you're, yeah, so-
I, I didn't add College Park in, so I didn't take it back out.
Right, so that, it, it's, uh, yeah, it'd be, uh, thirty, it'd be ten thousand, uh, ten million less, uh, thirty-two, four.
And you're at thirty-five.
Yeah.
Thirty-five, he's at thirty-two, thirty-three.
Okay. And based on twenty-five, so, and based on twenty-five, courthouse, see, we don't know, that's probably need to hear from Harry. We really need, I think Harry, talking today and today's numbers, I know, I know the problem is, must've gone and cost us three or four years, but, but to help us work on this, we need to hear from Harry.
Well, I think we've eliminated some things regardless of what Harry brings to the table.
Harry. So, so what we're looking at taking off, is it, are the, uh, vertical projects which include the two fire stations? Gentlemen?
I'm listening. I'm not voting, I'm listening.
Yeah, yeah, well, what we take off today, we can add back next week.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, if we take out the two fire stations, that's fourteen, four three million. And, uh, I would like to, to kind of, I, I say take off, put it out there to the right, I'd like to put this, the College Park drainage, that ten million dollars out to the right too, until we see what the city's going to do. You know, if they're not serious about, and we don't know, I'd just like to see how serious they are with their list and their commitment, before we put ten million dollars into that. So, hold that out there, of course, I, I didn't include that in my seventy-four. And let's see, so put those out. Alan, what's, what's the deal on Altima Hall Canal tree removal and bank stabilization? What's the importance of that?
I was referred to the public works direction.
And I was referred to Paul, man.
Boy, you're just passing that right on to Paul.
That, that, that project is, is an effort to address, um, the Brunswick Canal Block Canal, you know, it's originally the transportation canal, but it's, it's, over the years, it's become our main drainage spine for that section of, of the county. We have a lot of current development, new development, and, uh, right now for most of the, the large sections there, it's unmaintained. We, we had trouble in last storms where trees have gone down in it and we can't get to them, it's, it's just, uh, well overgrown and unmaintained, um, only getting worse.
More, more drainage related, having trees in it and blocking the drainage?
Yes, and we, we, you know, they, I think it was this past year, y'all pulled out that, uh, railroad culvert, tried to open it up, make improvements, we put a new bridge on, but all those are, you know, if we, if we can't get the trees out and get it cleaned out and get it working, they're, they're not, we're not taking advantage of all that infrastructure we're putting in.
I'm just curious, uh, do we do any digging and removal in there at all now?
There, well, there are sections where we have a, a maintenance shoulder that we can get in and we maintain certain sections of it, but for big chunks of it, we don't.
How do we, cleaning and maintaining that canal mixed with historical value? What, what kind of repercussions will we have if we go in? Can, can that be looked at?
Well, right, right now it's, uh, it, it's almost a ruin for its historic value. Um, so I, I think from, from the standpoint of trying to make that, even, uh, for, we had a, we had a committee together that was looking at a vision to opening that up as a, uh, as a linear park, improving the, the tow paths and cleaning out the canal caviling and stuff, uh, that really lent more towards a historic use. Removing trees, opening it up would certainly lean towards that. But as far as, uh, improving the historic value, I don't, I don't know.
I'm not talking about improving the historic value, I'm talking about running in conflict of, of, uh, historical things, uh, with, with people that don't want to disturb.
Uh, we're going to run into that with the, because it's, uh, the, the Corps has established, or they've stated that it's now established as a wetlands area, and so it's going to be more protected as a wetland than a historic feature. Which is why the committee kind of stopped because of wetlands issues, that's why the, the costs are up on it. I expect we're going to have to mitigate.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we have a, that's a vital drainage issue. I'll tell you, we have another dish at another part of the county that, uh, sound like we had the same issues, didn't we Dave, out of thirty-two? Trees falling in it, blocking flood?
Yes sir, the, the, we, when we also talked about this, we also talked about, uh, the ecotourism of this particular space, okay? We did address core issues when we built the, uh, the Glencoe Bridge. We had to get a permit from the Corps as well as the, uh, environmental folks. Our problem with this area when we looked at it on GIS was that we didn't own this piece of property, and we own the canal, but the piece right next to it, we didn't own. So that's why we've got acquisition and permitting may be an issue. So, we had looked at, so there's various folks, uh, that have, have looked at the canal and said, this is an opportunity for kayaking, ecotourism, whatever. And so we thought this was low hanging fruit. Kill two birds with one stone, clean up some drainage area, even though the canal's not really a drainage ditch, clean up some of that and also have an opportunity for people to put in and, and go down the, the canal. So, uh, it was, it was an easy stretch, it was close to our, our park that we already had at, at, uh, North Glen, however, there are some issues on, on property that need to be further investigated, I think.
Would you like to see it stay in there?
Say again?
Yeah, I say, would you like to see it stay in there?
I, I think it needs a little more, uh, I mean, I, I, we need to investigate a little more, see if we can, we can make it happen. It's, it's tough when we put these things on there that are, uh, that have a lot of, uh, acquisition and right-of-way issues makes it more challenging.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was also going to ask about the, uh, the coastal, which various, uh- Oh, yeah, green, green white. Oh, that's an M, that's an M. Never mind.
So while you're up there Dave, we talked about this last week about, uh, these ten acres that are listed under other for storm debris on St. Thomas Island because the airport wasn't going to be a usable, uh, area if, if we had another-
Correct, correct.
Have you already identified the ten acres that-
No, no, GIS has printed a, a map off of potential areas on the island. My staff's cursory view of that, uh, those, those didn't look favorable. Uh, there were, there were no large areas south of Sea Island Road, and at some point in time, you, you got to think, if you're going to haul debris north of Sea Island Road, then why not just haul it off the island? So, uh, I, it probably needs a little bit more investigation from, uh, from staff as far as looking at those properties. Paul has the copy, we haven't sat and talked about it, but we probably need to sit down and, and look at it a little closer, but, uh, the public works view is, if you're going to haul it that, I mean, unless there's a, a big problem up north and you need a place to store stuff up north on the island, if it, if, if a majority of the debris is, is Sea Island south, then we just move it off the island. Takes a little longer to clear up, but we move it off the island.
So that makes sense.
Possible to scratch up one and a half.
So, so, so the idea was to make it a passive, passive somewhat park? So you could see making it a passive park, having some nice signature oak trees in there, all of a sudden the big storm comes and now you need to make a big debris pile out of it, that, that might be a challenge too. It's like saying you want to go into Gascoigne Park and remove a couple of the signature oaks so you can stack up some debris for temporary storage.
So, you, you're only, you're going to get back with us and let us know if, uh, you think it's-
We sure can, yes sir.
I never, I never did like that.
Oh, okay. And that's really based on all right-of-way issues and anything?
Uh, the, the, the property next to the canal is not owned by the county, so, uh, you know, we, we had, we initially talked about having a shelf, removing the trees, maybe putting a, a concrete path or sidewalk along the side of the canal. So, are we back to the Altima, uh, Altima Canal? Yeah, that, that was the issue, and then it was, then it got into tree removal, how wide was the property, that kind of stuff. Needs a little bit more exploring, if you, if you all think that's worthy of us looking, the staff will look into it a little deeper.
Way up there before you get away.
Yes sir. I, I might-
I mean, for my part, I think everything, oh, Alan is the, uh, this may not be something, might be for Catherine, but the shoreline protection plan implementation, two million, that's got a high priority.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, as you're aware, we've engaged some consultants to, uh, provide us with a shoreline protection implementation plan, um, that'll include measures to protect our shoreline. We do not have that planned currently, they're still, um, gathering some data for that, um, but we thought this would be an opportunity to add some of those protective measures that we may want to seek out in the future. So two million dollars, I mean, really it's just kind of a placeholder right now.
Uh, Catherine, the, uh, I think you're the one really familiar with all this, so, with the money that we got, that the governor was generous about sending down this way, is this tied, I mean, is, is this part of something that we need to do in terms of our, our, our part to deal to receive that money from the government? Or is this just-
No, this is-
More work needs to be done?
This is separate, but it would allow for us to do additional work. It, it may be, you know, um, finishing out some, uh, some portions of the rock preventment that that two-point-five million dollars is not going to allow us to get to. It may be some other measures, um, you know, one of the, uh, uh, concerns that we've talked about in our meeting was the flooding that Black Island Regional Park had during Hurricane Irma, um, and what type of fortification, and hopefully not, I think they want to look more at, um, things that aren't necessarily hard fortifications, um, but how we can protect our shoreline, um, and, and, you know, again, using best practices for each, you know, particular area. It, it won't necessarily just be the beaches, um, it's, it's a more all-inclusive plan for the county.
All right, that's good. Thank you, ma'am. All right, Commissioners, uh, Grant?
Mr. Chairman, may I address you momentarily?
Yes sir.
On the issue of the fire stations, uh, the fire stations, I have estimates from, uh, from the architect- On the issue of the fire stations, the fire stations, I have estimates from the architect, and they were based on two thousand twenty-two construction. And they totaled about ten and a half million. I think what had happened is there was a mistake on, on adding the inflation. What I would do is ask you to, to visit my station one. And the living conditions in that station are atrocious, the sewer backs up into it. You sit in the day room with the trucks pull in, the floor effects flexes up in the day room, we can't keep tiles in it. I have an architectural study, it doesn't meet wind load protection, the location's poor. At, at this point in time, I, I would encourage you to very strongly, bare minimum, look at the replacement of station one. Station one truthful, it should be replaced with two smaller stations. You know, we are, we're in an area right now to where, I don't like the healthcare concerns, the energy's not, it's not energy efficient. I don't have sufficient room. We have a fire station at station four off Frederica. I can't even pull two trucks in to fit in the bay without folding the rear bumper up. So if we don't plan now for the future of these stations, as apparatus gets larger, the call volume keeps going up, I believe we're going to have a further issue.
Let me ask you this, on your, uh, the numbers you have, it says fire station, station one.
Yes.
That's the actual, that's out here at Powell.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and fire station five, where is that?
That's the airport which is moving that station. They are moving the station, and what it boils down to, the price for station five was a price if we built a freestanding station five. As the airport constructs it, they've told me we're responsible for at least half the cost. They will pay for the park that takes care of aircraft rescue firefighting, but we also base an engine, and I'd like to base a squad there, ambulance. So we'd have to pay for that additional space.
Do we have any idea what they may be doing, if they're going to do that?
Uh, yes, sir, I, if I'm not mistaken, they told me their construction plan is twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
So we'll have to come up with, after, or whatever. And they said how much they think the fire station, is it, is it like fifty-fifty or have they?
What they've told me is that they will pay for the area that includes ARF. So that'll be two bays, I need two bays. Living quarters could be shared. I would make the assumption that it's a fifty-fifty shared cost?
We can track that. I can get with Rob, get more specifics.
Well, we may need to really do something, especially with that. You'll find out from Rob what that deal's going to be in a timeline. We really need to get engaged on that, that we're going to have to come up. I mean, you got a price down here of seven point three million.
So, so let me discuss the price. The price was originally four point three million, and the price from the Hussey Gay Bell folks assumed a six percent inflation a year. I went back to the original price, and so the final, the price of the, the fire station for twenty-twenty-two was five point three, assuming it's six percent. I went back to the four point three, I added ten percent a year, because that's what we're doing, and that's why you have this number. Let me also add, and Chief's not going to like this, but you can also look at these fire stations and say, what needs, does it, do we need a new fire station? Or do we need to address what the deficiencies are and fix the deficiencies? I'm not sure, and, and Chief will tell you that fire station's in the wrong place, and he's probably right. And I don't know where it needs to be, and, and the price of the land is not in this number. But when is the last time we renovated a fire station? When is the last time we, we fixed one up? We had a structural evaluation done, you know, let's fix the slab, let's fix, you know, whatever needs to be fixed. So I, you know, let's make the bays longer on station four so the trucks can fit in. So there are, there are other options to a brand new fire station. Now Chief's going to kick me with his good foot, he's got one bad foot and one good foot.
Well, Chief, it feels like I'm stepping on your toes, it's your good foot, ain't your bad foot?
And, and we could come back to the board, the Chief and I could work together, believe it or not. Or we could come back to the board and say, you know, what we'd really like to do is renovate this one, this one, and a new one here, or whatever, and give you some other options on a menu. Other than just two brand new fire stations.
Yeah, I think Gordon would love to have that.
Chief, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed a part on one of, station five at the airport. Is that's take off the touchdown? That, I mean, that's, that's our part, or is that included there?
No, I think that's the total part.
That's the total part.
We have to get with Rob and find out what our part needs to do.
Well, I, I got to believe the FAA is going to step up to a big percent of that, and probably GDI as well.
The airport part, the part from a square footed standpoint, that's assigned to the airport.
About half. About half is on?
That's, that's the impression that I get in speaking with him. He said the FAA will pay for the part that protects, that actually is ARF firefighting. So that's bunk area, living area, bay area.
We may have to raise our rent. Okay, well, Alan's going to check in with Director Burr.
And I do respectfully disagree with, with Mr. Austin. Station one's location is extremely poor. We have a train blocking traffic three or four times a day coming through there, so.
Yeah, I think that's a.
And I will work with him to do anything that's in the best interest of the county. Thank you.
If, if, if you were to build a new one, you know, we found the money to buy land and build a new one, do you know where you want to go?
Yes, sir.
Where, where would you want to go to?
I'm afraid if I told you, the price would go up on the property. Afraid the price would go up on the property.
Yeah, yeah, so please talk.
Is it Inglewood County?
Well, property is cheaper in Kansas.
That's a winner, say Inglewood County. Okay. You, you can tell me.
Yes, sir.
Confidence up there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, Chief, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, I think that the way I see it is we got a pretty good idea of, of being able to do the Hs. Do all the Hs on this list. Seeing to me, we just need to hear from what Doug Clifford says, I mean, get an idea of what he says, start working on a number there, see what we kind of want to do. And digest what we have here today. We may just have a regular, have a meeting outside of, have a regular work session next time and do this as one of the agenda items. I wish the city decides it ready to come to us and want a joint meeting again, but we'll, we'll play it by ear. I think we've been sorry just about as much as we can have to do with it. Y'all got any more questions?
No.
Okay. Here being none, this meeting is a given. Thank you, guys.